...at 7:00 PM on January 12th of 2012. Please join me as James Gude leads the board's opening prayer.
Father, we're truly thankful to you that you have given us not only this day, but this opportunity at this time to be here as a group focused on the public education of our school district. And Father, as we begin this new year, help us to have a focus and a dedication on all of our students that they may be successful throughout this second semester. But also, Father, we ask for your encouragement and your guidance to all of our educators as they work with the students. May all of our students realize and understand how much we do truly care about them and that their education is our number one priority. Father, we are thankful for these very important and very special guests we have this evening and the opportunity that we have to recognize them. Help us as we enter this meeting and conduct the affairs of this school district that we'll do everything, not only for the benefit of the students, but your name will be glorified in everything that we say and do, for this is our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, Ms. Webb and Ms. Chaffin are absent tonight, but we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, I will turn the media to Dr. Burns for Agenda Item 1A. Welcome and recognition of special guests.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. We haven't seen you since the new year started, so we're glad you're sharing this evening with us. At this time, I'm proud to introduce our VIPs. So let me read you a little bit about our very important profession of teaching program. Tonight, we will honor our newest members in the very important profession of teaching program. We have been honoring our VIPs for 25 years. Our VIP program is our way of saying thank you to our professional staff for being innovative leaders in learning who diligently work to meet the needs of all our students. We want to recognize their efforts in making our schools a great place for quality learning to occur. To our honored guests, the Board of Trustees and the administration say thank you for being a member of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD team and for being an innovator who has a positive influence on the lives of students. Educators, please come forward when your principal introduces you tonight to receive your certificate. If there are staff members, friends, and family here tonight to celebrate this with you, please stand as your VIP is introduced. Ms. Klein, would you now please join me in the front to recognize our honored guests?
Mrs. Klein, members of the board, Dr. Burns. My name is Walter Peterson, principal at Freeman Elementary School. It is with great pleasure I introduce you to the latest inductee into the very important profession of teaching, Ms. Mary Michaels. This is Mary's second recognition as a VIP here in Carrollton Farmers Branch. That should say enough, but if you know me, I just have to say a few more words. If you know Mary too, you know why she was nominated by her colleagues. Mrs. Michaels is like a mom to everyone, her students and teammates alike. She is always there for you, no matter what you need. She will lend a helping hand. We are elementary teachers, so you know we need a lot of things during the course of our instruction during a normal day. If you need a needle and thread, a bell, or even ants when they're having a kindergarten picnic, she has it. You know all of those important things. Mrs. Michaels is and has been team leader and has served on committees to improve student success at Freeman. She is in her room early in the morning until late and dark at night. Sometimes we have to tell her to go home. If you walk into her classroom, you will see her on the floor with all kinds of manipulatives working with her students. This tells you how much she loves to work with her kids. She has the perfect demeanor for the job, and it shows. Not to outdo her teammates, but she could be a one man or woman show. She could do it all, even if she was the only kindergarten teacher. She writes notes to students, their parents, organizes lunches, cooks, cleans, and most importantly, helps students be successful. She does an awesome job of preparing and providing the foundation for her kindergarten students. They enter first grade with required skills due to her commitment and efforts to ensure their high achievement. Mrs. Michaels' students will share with you that she does make us work a lot, or, but they are fun things that we do. We get to borrow things, and she's really funny when she talks sometimes. We even learned about life cycles of a frog in class. And Mrs. Michaels, this will make your day. She's pretty. Again, it is our pleasure, she knows that, it's our pleasure to honor and recognize the teacher and mom of all teachers and moms, Mary Michaels. Congratulations.
Dr. Burns, members of the Board of Trustees, my name is Larry Connor, and I am currently the principal at Ferno Elementary and proud to be there. Tonight, I am pleased to recognize Ms. Melody Adams as a member of the very important profession Ms. Adams did not just wake up one morning and decide she would be the music teacher at Ferno. Activities growing up in Plano began with preschool and children's choir, piano lessons in second grade, and private violin, beginning at the age of 11. Along the way came numerous awards and recognitions, not the least of which was being a member of the Texas All-State Orchestra. After graduating with honors from Trent University in San Antonio, Ms. Adams began her teaching career in first grade in Plano ISD, followed by seven more years in music. After teaching in Plano for eight long years and a couple of years as a stay-home mom, she saw the light and brought her musicianship and enthusiasm to CFB and Ferno, where she has been for the past four years. During this time, Ms. Adams has become an integral part of the Ferno family, encouraging her students to develop a love of music, rhythm, instrumentation, and singing. Naturally, the Ferno community thinks of her as the world's best music teacher, but she's also a wife, mother of two young men, and active in her church choir and frequently shares her expertise as a violinist. At school, she directs the choir and frequently works with the PTA to develop programs to showcase the talents of her Ferno Braves. At a recent feeder school concert, several comments were overheard remarking on the outstanding performance by our choir. Some said they were better than the middle school. Her students will tell you, Ms. Adams makes learning fun. She knows how to correct us without making us feel bad. And Ms. Adams is an awesome singer herself. Among her peers, she is considered a team player, amazingly talented, trustworthy friend, always upbeat, wonderful mom, and beautiful Christian, who is a champion for all children. Again, we at Ferno are proud to recognize someone aptly named Melody Adams as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
You know, once again, having the opportunity to come here tonight, it really shows how our principals have a hard time counting. The 250-word limit has been exceeded. Once again, so I had one that was written at 250, and then I had one that's over 2,500, so I'm gonna do the 2,500. Dr. Burns, members of the board, I'm Lance Hamlin, the principal at Tom Landry Elementary. We are here tonight to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Ms. Vicki Severs.
Ms. Severs has been at Landry Elementary for the past seven years, as a teacher aide, pre-K teacher, and the last couple of years as a kindergarten teacher. Every time I walk into her classroom, I have the pleasure of seeing what every principal and parent want to see for their children. I see a true professional that dedicates every second of every day challenging the students academically while making sure they are enjoying their educational experiences. I see students building positive relationships with their peers and their teacher. I hear laughter while I see students learning. I feel the love that encompasses your room. God, I don't like this. I feel the love that encompasses your room, and when I say that, I mean it from the bottom of my heart, because what you do with our kids every single day, it's truly amazing. And Dr. Burns, you stand next to her today, and you had the opportunity to stand next to me in her classroom. And I actually believe, I know my feet were measured by her kids. I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to have that as well. You've gotta be careful when you walk into her classroom, because you're gonna be doing things you didn't expect, or have things done to you, I should say. It is easy to understand why the students, at the end of the day, do not want to go home, because your classroom is their home. When I asked students to tell me something about their teacher, they responded with a typical kindergarten response. She's nice, she's funny, she teaches us stuff, and she loves us. I asked a student to give me some specific examples of why she's such a great teacher. I regret it now. She teaches us things that we need to know when we get older. I asked what things, and the student replied, "I don't know, because I'm not old yet." But you should know. She was a cute little girl. The staff at Landry expressed the following thoughts about Vicki. She is the most dedicated teacher I have ever met. Whenever I'm having a bad day, I think of Vicki, and I smile. I would love to be a kindergartner in her classroom. She is the most positive, caring, enthusiastic teacher I know. She pushes herself daily to make sure her students learn and have fun during every lesson. My students keep asking me, "Can I go to her class?" Vicki believes each child can learn no matter what obstacle they encounter, and she takes the time to build a relationship with every child and parent. As the principal of Tom Landry Elementary, I'm extremely fortunate to say you are a part of our incredible Landry family. Tom Landry Elementary and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Ms. Severs as a member of
Good evening, Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, members of the board. I'm Bob Tipton. I'm the principal at Mary Grimes Education Center. Tonight, it's my honor to introduce and recognize Valerie Hazlett as a member of the very important This is Valerie's fifth year at Mary Grimes, but I've had the privilege of knowing and working with her for 12 years since she's been in the district. She is the ultimate team player, she possesses a contagious can-do attitude, and this can be demonstrated by the fact that this is the second time that you've recognized her. She was also a VIP from B. Salazar. Because of the high standard she sets for teaching and learning, Valerie has made a lasting impact on the students and staff of Mary Grimes. Valerie teaches social studies classes at Mary Grimes, and through her engaging teaching style, her enthusiasm for real-life lessons, and her genuine caring for her students, Valerie connects with at-risk kids like nobody I've ever seen before. When you walk into Valerie's room, you'll see her sitting next to her students, engaged in academic conversations, talking about a social studies topic, explaining it in terms that help them understand. She is motivational, inspirational, an exceptional educator, and a friend. Here are a couple of comments from her peers. Valerie is a dedicated teacher. She constantly individualizes learning for her students. She does whatever it takes to support them in their success. Valerie is also a good team member to work with. She constantly communicates with others and is willing to take time to brainstorm ideas with fellow teachers. Another teacher says, "She is frequently thinking of new ways to improve the quality of learning for each of her students based on their individual abilities. She is always working one-on-one with as many students as possible each day to increase her students' academic progress." I would like to close by saying that I have seen Valerie take our toughest kids, students who have given up on themselves, who are on the edge of dropping out of school, and under her guidance become graduates of this district. Thank you, Valerie, for choosing Mary Grimes as your home campus, and we are pleased to honor you as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Dr. Burns, members of the school board, I'm Pat Hester of the B. Salazar Center, and I'm here tonight to honor our newest member of the very important profession of The term "very important person" cannot begin to express the importance and value that Ashley brings to the administration, to the teachers, and most importantly, to the students of the B. Salazar Center. Ashley is no stranger to CFB, attending McLaughlin and Country Place Elementary, Field Middle School, and graduating from R.L. Turner High School in 2002, and is the second graduate from R.L. Turner to receive this wonderful honor from our campus. One thing's for sure, we know how to educate 'em in CFB. For the past six years, Ashley has served our campus as our social studies teacher. In this past year, with the loss of our campus tax coordinator, volunteered to help me coordinate our assessment testing, and has worked many hours this school year preparing for that very strategic task. I asked the staff to send me a few comments that would honor Ashley, and I'd like to share just a few of those with you tonight. Ashley is always available to help me out and never minds answering questions or helping me to address a concern. I truly enjoy having the opportunity to teach with her. She is the ultimate team player, and that she will help out anywhere she is asked to do so. She is able to think through problems and always come up with a workable solution. She balances being a great mom and a great teacher with ease, and this one's my favorite. In all the years I've been coming to honor teachers and seeing teachers honored here, I've never heard this one. She is the bomb dot com. We are truly proud to welcome Ashley Bonilla as a valuable and dedicated colleague and our newest member of the very prestigious, important profession of teaching.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, we do have another special recognition tonight, and I'd like to read you a little bit formal and then make some informal comments. Texas School Board Recognition Month is always in January. The governor of Texas, Rick Perry, is designated, January always, as School Board Recognition Month. This month gives us an opportunity to thank our school board members for devoting their time and energy to public education. The Carrollton Farmers Branch School District Board of Education makes decisions based on the district's goal of high achievement for all students, and they do what they believe is right for all our students, and they are committed to the success of all of the students that we serve. Tonight, you see in the administration building many decorations, artworks displayed from our schools. This is just one way that our students show how much they appreciate the work of these seven elected officials. And you know, actually, when I think about it, every month could be Board Appreciation Month, because their work is just as hard in all the other months as they do in January. They give countless hours to being a board member, and it does take a lot of hours. I think sometimes we think that they just come here on Thursday night, but there's a lot of time spent in preparation, a lot of time expending activities, et cetera. So it is on behalf of our administrators, our teachers, and our staff, and my honor to extend to all of you our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the work that you do, and thank you for all your service. And I would ask the crowd now to please join me in recognizing these dedicated volunteers. Okay, now they gotta go to work, so. We do have a special treat for you tonight, I believe. We have the cast from Newman Smith's Sound of Music, and they will perform a special number just in honor of our school board members. You may want to get their autograph. You might see them again sometime. We weren't so many there. We invite you to go see The Sound of Music at Newman Smith High School, January 26 through 28, and we'll probably hear that again here during our announcements. So we have one other thing during recognition time, and that's our announcements regarding our school activities.
Good evening. My name is Desiree.
And I'm Sarah. Welcome to another edition of the board announcements for the month of January. We are students in the Academy for Media Arts and Technology at R.L. Turner High School in Carrollton, and we are pleased to deliver to you the important news you need to know about the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District.
Dr. Burns and his leadership team were at it again the last months of 2011, honoring another set of schools who earned either an exemplary or a recognized rating for the 2010-2011 school year. An incredible 31 schools earned either one of these last year. The schools visited were Good Elementary, recognized; McOrde Elementary, recognized; Ferno Elementary, recognized; Sheffield Intermediate Elementary, recognized; Landry Elementary, recognized; Farmers Branch Elementary, exemplary; Lantin Elementary, exemplary; and McCamey Elementary received an exemplary rating for the 2010-2011 school year. Congratulations to all of those schools for all your hard work.
It's time once again for the 11th Annual CFB ISD Gently Used Book Sale. The Gently Used Book Sale is a fundraising event co-hosted by the CFB ISD Council, PTA, and the CFB ISD Educational Foundation for the benefit of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Proceeds help support such things as student scholarships, teacher grant a clothes closet, the multi programs, as well as safe, alcohol-free, and drug-free post-prom parties for all four CFB ISD high schools.
The event takes place at a new location in Mills Point Shopping Center at 2810 East Trinity Mills Road, Suite 117 in Carrollton, from February 23rd to the 26th. Please take the time to stop by. Here is a list of dates and times, as well as prices for the books that will be at the You can also help out by not just going, but donating. Do you have hardback paper books, paperback books, audiobooks, DVDs, or other items that you typically find in a bookstore? You can drop off these items at any CFB ISD school lobby or at the administration building.
You can also drop off items at the book sale location in the Mills Point Shopping Center. You can check out www.gentlyusedbooksale.org, and if you would like to volunteer, the educational foundation and PTA could use your support. Information about volunteering is on the book sale website as well.
It seems like we just got back, but another school and district holiday is upon us. CFB ISD will be closed on Monday, January, in observance of the Martin Luther King holiday.
Thanks for tuning in this week. Our next regular school board meeting will be right here in the boardroom on Thursday, February 2nd at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the administration building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. Until next month, we wish you a good night as we So at this time, it is 7:32, and we'll come back at 7:42, and thank y'all so much for being here with us tonight.
Could've used some more of that.
Carrollton Farmers Branch Board attests these back to order. We are at Item 2, Report by Superintendent. 2A is Presentation on Student Achievement, AEIS ERG. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, and members of the board. Before I turn it over to Dr. Mayor to introduce the presentation tonight, you've heard bits and pieces of this information as early as August regarding, we were updating the strategic plan and looking at our test data, as well as our academic data under the ERG system. But tonight is the annual formal presentation that by statute we're required to give you regarding AEIS and AYP, and then also we wanted to kind of, again, give you more information and some new updated information around the independent group, Educational Resource Group, that we use their scorecard, if you will, of academic performance as a measuring tool for how well we're doing. So we're very pleased with the results, and wish more of our staff here tonight to celebrate in the successes of that. But as Ms. Klein said in her remarks about high achievement for all students, we are reaching that. We're not there yet, but we are certainly on the road, and we're very pleased to present that information to you tonight. So, Dr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Dr. Burns, I think you said it all. We are very pleased with our academic achievement. Tonight's report is required. We must report on our state data, the state system, which is referred to as Academic Excellence Indicator System, or AEIS. So many of you may hear us talk about AEIS. And then, of course, out of No Child Left Behind, we have to give an annual report on adequate yearly performance and progress and how we are meeting those requirements. As Dr. Burns indicated, in this district, we look at multiple measures. We certainly want to and will be in compliance and report what the state, what the federal government requires us to report, but additionally, we are always looking at other measures and how we are doing, and that information comes from Education Resource Group, where we will be looking at our academic performance there, and really how we stack up against the 200 largest school districts in Texas in a ranking. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director for Assessment and Accountability, Dr. Claude Hastings. Dr. Hastings?
Dr. Burns, President Klein, board members. You know, a lesser man might take a little offense to having an audience of about 20 when we had hundreds plus in here, but we'll struggle forward.
You don't sing quite as well.
Well, we'll just, exactly, I don't. Okay, the first slide is one that we already knew. It's a wonderful slide. It's always a pleasure to come to the board with good news, and the good news is that we're once again a recognized district. We're gonna be reporting tonight on the last AEIS report that comes from tax data. Tax will be going away, and actually, we will not have a formal presentation next year because there won't be a formal accountability. We will come back and report to you some test data, but not as an AEIS system. The student groups that we use every year in AEIS have remained unchanged. We look at all students, African-American, Hispanic, white, and economically disadvantaged. And what we show you each year is the comparison between our population and the state's population in each of these sub-popes. We do this largely because we pretty much mirror the test, the state's demographics, so that when we look at future slides in which we do some comparison with the state, you know that we're pretty much comparing apples to apples. The one place, if you're looking at this and how it doesn't quite add up the way you might think it should, is because the state only has 3.4% Asian, while our district has 10.6% Asian. So we have almost three times the number of Asians that the state has. We look at these subject areas, reading, language arts, writing, math, social studies, and science. Those have remained unchanged. What has changed for 2011 is that tax-accommodated, tax-modified, and tax-alternative in all subjects and in all grades 3 through 11 are now reported under the tax results. So we will only be talking about tax results. We won't be pulling out the special ed populations that were given accommodated tests, modified tests, or alternative tests, because they're all lumped together. There are three other indicators besides tax results that we'll be looking at. The completion rate, grades 9 through 12, the annual dropout rate, only for the grades 7 and 8, and the under-reported students, which I'll define for you in a few slides. The exemplary standard for tax is all subjects and for campuses and district must be at the mastery level of 90%, plus 25% commended for all students and economically disadvantaged categories. This is new, 25%, as well as 60% of the students identified as English language learners have to have, meet the progress indicator. To be recognized, a campus and district must meet the mastery level at 80%, plus 15% commended for all students, as well as, again, the 60% for your ELL population. There are three ways in which you can get a rating. You can meet the absolute standard, and those are the standards I just shared with you, or you can meet an improvement standard, or you can use some exemption provisions. However, our district did not need anything other than the absolute standard. We met that at the absolute rating for either exemplary or recognized for all tax indicators, every subject, every student group, without the assistance of any special provisions. We're very proud of that. When we look at the number of indicators that the district is rated upon, there are 30 now. It used to be 25, it's now 30. We're looking at a future that will include even more. And on this chart, I've highlighted in gold those areas in which we met the exemplary standard of 90% or above, and in blue are the indicators that are 80% or above. You see, everything is either blue or gold, with the exception of the limited English proficient indicator, the ELL indicator, because there is no rating associated with that. However, remember, the standard was 60%. We're at 86%. We flew right by that. So we're in great shape on that indicator as well. Of the 30, 18 or 62% of those standards were met at the exemplary level, and 11% or 38, 11 or 38% were recognized. So we are moving towards the exemplary side rather than just barely making recognized. You could understand that some districts or campuses could be rated as recognized, and all you would see up there is blue with no gold. We have more gold than blue. That's a good thing. The AEIS reports completion rate for the previous class is always one year behind, so we're looking at the class of 2010. The longitudinal rate shows students who first attended 9th grade in 2006, '07, and have graduated in four years, or are continuing their education into a fifth year. The completion rate standards are 95% to be exemplary, 85 to be recognized, and 75 to be academically accepted, acceptable. Completion rates are rounded to the nearest tenth of a percent, as opposed to some of our others that are just rounded to the whole. And these are our completion rates for the class of 2010. You see that we had improvement in all areas, and that we reached the exemplary status in African-American for the first time, and that we continued the exemplary status for the white sub-populations. The annual dropout rate, as I indicated before, is only for the 7th and 8th graders. And here we look at the dropout rate that is acceptable is 1.6. You won't see anything up there other than .1%. So we did another outstanding year in our dropout rates in our middle schools. We had four overall, one African-American, three Hispanics, three economically disadvantaged. The under-reported students, now these are students for whom neither the district nor the state were able to identify where they are presently, or where they were last year. That means we couldn't identify that they moved somewhere within the state, that they moved out of state. We don't know where they came or where they went after they left us. That's not a good thing. So the standards are, you have to have 150 or fewer, or 3% of your population or fewer. Our district had only 17. 17. 0.1%. This is something that we've worked on for many, many years. Kathy Webb deserves a great deal of the credit for that number up there. I'm here to tell you, 17 is an incredible number. We have had districts, neighboring districts, that have not met this standard in the past. So it's a long way from 150 to 17. This is an incredible number. Now we're gonna look at kind of an eight-year history on tax and where we have gone and where we are. We're gonna first look at the reading over the last eight years. You'll see that we have had a nice convergence up into the, that's the 89th, the economically disadvantaged is now at the 89th percentile, and the African-American is at 90%. So and then hiding behind that is the Hispanics, so they're right at 89%, and the whites are a little higher at about 94%. We brought those sub-popes together in a very tight arrangement and a very good arrangement. We are just barely under the exemplary status when you reach 89%. And remember, 90 was the standard for exemplary. Mathematics, we've seen some dramatic growth in our economically disadvantaged, in our African-American, and in our Hispanic. We've had a little disappointment in our African-American, because about four years ago, while it was in league with the economically disadvantaged and Hispanics, it's dropped a little bit, but mostly it's about the improvement of the economically disadvantaged in the Hispanics. And again, we have pretty well narrowed that gap among the groups for mathematics. Writing, writing is an incredible story. There is virtually no difference among any of the sub-popes at this point, remembering that we started at about the 83rd percentile over there for economically disadvantaged and for Hispanics, and now we've got all sub-popes at 93 or 94%. Science, here we have the most dramatic increases. Back in 2004, our economically disadvantaged was 45%. Today, 83%. 45 to 83, so remarkable improvement. And you can see that the sub-popes of African-American and Hispanic mirror that growth over that same period of time, and the white population also improved from about 82% to 93%. The social studies, much like the writing, we have all our sub-popes right on top of each other, sitting out there at the 93, 94 percentile ranks. Then we're gonna look just at the economically disadvantaged, and there's a couple of reasons why we look at the economically disadvantaged separately, one of which is it is the single indicator that separates school districts and campuses. Unlike the other sub-population groups, it is the economically disadvantaged that creates the most consistent variable from district to district, state to state, and this is the heart of the ERG system that looks at the economically disadvantaged. That's the system that we've been looking at for this past year and a half, and that's a strong reason for why we look at it tonight. And here, once again, you can see how dramatic our growth has been in science, in math, and in social studies, even outshining the writing. And our reading improving from approximately 68% up to 89%. A nice growth in every area. This is our commended performance for those five subject areas. You can see we've had continuous growth in this with a couple of drops in the last two years in writing and in math. One of the challenges that we continue to look at for the commended on writing is students can do extremely well on the multiple choice portion of the test, but then they also have to get a 3 or a 4 on the written composition. While the passing standard is 2 on a commended, I mean for a composition, you must have a 3 or a 4 on the written composition, and that's pretty challenging. And over the course of time, those prompts have gotten more challenging in writing. But you can see in social studies, we are now up to 54% of the students at the commended, not just passing, commended. The AEIS ratings for the campuses, we had 12 exemplary schools, 19 recognized, 6 academically Over the fall, you've been, each board session, you've had the recognized and exemplary and in social studies even outshining the writing. And our reading improving from approximately 68 percent up to 89 percent. A nice growth in every area. This is our commended performance for those five subject areas. You can see we've had continuous growth in this with a couple of drops in the last two years in writing and in math. One of the challenges that we continue to look at for the commended on writing is students can do extremely well on the multiple choice portion of the test, but then they also have to get a three or a four on the written composition. While the passing standard is two on a commended, I mean for a composition, you must have a three or a four on the written composition. And that's pretty challenging. And over the course of time, those prompts have gotten more challenging in writing. But you can see in social studies, we are now up to 54 percent of the students at the commended, not just passing, commended. The AIS ratings for the campuses, we had 12 exemplary schools, 19 recognized, six academically acceptable. Over the fall, you've been, each board session, you've had the recognized and exemplary campuses highlighted on the communication unit at the end, what do we call that?
Announcements.
Announcements.
The board announcements. Thank you, hard word, board announcements. We had two gold performances. These are special recognitions from the system that are given to districts and campuses for even stronger performance than we indicated on just the tax data. The first was for the college-ready grads, the class of 2010. This is our second year to get additional recognition for our college-ready grads. Obviously, this is one that we're extremely proud of because that's one of our focal points for our goals in the district. The percent of students receiving commended status for tax social studies at 54 percent gained us another gold recognition. Look a little closer at that college readiness grads. There's a lot of information up there about how that's calculated, but I'd like you to focus on the at least 35 percent of all student groups, 35 percent. You won't, you'll only see one place up there where we didn't meet that over the past three years. And that was African American in the class of 2008 was 30. Last year, African American was 65 percent. A 35 percent improvement in two years. That's phenomenal, folks. That is absolutely phenomenal. Every one of our groups up there, class of 2010, 70 for all students, 65 percent African American, 61 percent Hispanic, 81 for white, 60 percent economically disadvantaged. The gold performance acknowledgement that we received for social studies at all student level was 54 percent. African American and Hispanics were at 44 percent. 74 percent of the whites received it and 72 percent of our economically disadvantaged. Remembering that the standard was 30 percent or more, we have every population group there exceeding that by 12 percent or more. Moving along to the AYP, this is the adequate yearly progress. It's part of the federal No Child Left Behind legislation that was passed a number of years ago and hopefully is going out of existence in the near future. Under AYP, only reading, language arts, and mathematics are used for ratings. This is in opposition to the four subjects that we used in AIS. And the rating standards for 2011 are 80 percent for reading and 75 percent for math. Remembering that these ratchet up every year, every year, every year. In 2014, they are both to be at 100 percent. Under AYP, instead of looking at the five student subgroups, we now look at two additional sub-pops. We look at special education and the limited English proficient students. The operative part of this slide is that they, both of these groups, special education LEPS students who are identified because they have some challenges that other students do not have are held to the same performance status, standards that all other student groups are held to. There is no slack, no taking into account the particular specialities of special education or LEPS students. The district missed AYP this year with a 74 percent. Remembering that reading required 80 percent, we were at 74 percent for our special ed Pause, think about special education being on the same criteria with whites, African Americans, Hispanics, economically disadvantaged. 36 of the 40 campuses met AYP. AYP also has an additional indicator that we have to meet. For the district and for the high schools, that additional indicator is a graduation rate. This is as opposed to the completion rate for AIS. A graduation rate is a four-year. It does not look at the fifth year. And the standard is 75 percent and is calculated only for the all-student level and the district's rate was 87.3 percent. Again, over 12 percent above the standard and a nice improvement from our previous year. I believe the improvement there was 2.3 percent. For the middle schools and elementaries, they're measured on attendance and the standard on attendance is 90 percent, calculated only at the all-student level. The district's attendance rate for 2011 was 95.8 percent. Should be of particular interest to the board because that's also where we get some of our state funding is based off of attendance. We're also required to report to the board each year the percent of our teachers that are classified as highly qualified. Highly qualified means that they are certified in their core subjects. And we're pleased to announce that once again, the district has 100 percent of its teachers identified as highly qualified. Finally, we're going to look at the ERG, the Educational Resource Group that we've been looking at this year. You'll recall that our rating down there in the 1-1 quadrant, it is still there in the 1-1 quadrant. This is looking at the 200 largest districts in the state and we're in the best quadrant in the state. And our API, our Academic Performance Index, is 17th. And it was 17th last year. And our goal is to move that forward and we will. Our commitment, both the administration and the board, is to focus on that academic performance indicator and we will not allow finances to restrict that excellence in academics. As I indicated before, we are 17th among the 200 largest districts last year and this year. And this places the district in the top 9 percent in academic performance. Congratulations need to be felt by all students, staff, and you, the board of trustees. Any questions?
Ms. Watson.
Have you, have we been able to do any type of tracking of our students once they hit college and as how many of them complete four years of college? Have we ever been able to do any kind of a?
We have, we have information from the National Clearing House that gives us that kind of information. And it tracks it by enrollment, by semester, and then by the number of students who do end up completing a four-year program. Yes, ma'am, we have that. Do I have it with me? No, but I'll be happy to get that for you.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to know exactly how many, not necessarily four years, but hardly any of us finish in four years, but finishing college period and with a degree of some time. Also, what does it mean to be a highly qualified teacher?
Dr. Hastings, would you please speak into the mic? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That means that we have teachers who have the required hours in the subjects for which they are teaching.
It varies. For elementary, it's one thing, for secondary.
And what is it for elementary?
Elementary is meeting, completing the, passing the content for elementary.
Passing?
The content, the, passing the elementary content.
Oh.
You can be certified and not highly qualified, you can be highly qualified and not certified. It gets a little complex, complicated.
So how is it rated? Does it have anything to do with the evaluations of the teachers or is just?
No, it has to do with certification.
Oh, totally certification.
You have to have the hours or have passed the content exam.
I see.
Yeah, Ms. Watson, that's a federal requirement under No Child Left Behind. And it doesn't look at necessarily state certification. That's what Ms. Garza said. You could be highly qualified, not certified, certified and not, not certified but not highly qualified either. And so you have to look at a combination of things, but that's what HR does and they have certified that all of our teachers meet that at the federal standard at 100 percent. So, which is pretty difficult. A lot of districts don't meet that standard because it's kind of crazy how you calculate it, so.
Mr. Goot?
Dr. Hastings, tax results for math and science. Looking at the charts that you've shown, if you extrapolate out the subgroups, when do they merge into one number? And there's not this 10 percent disparity between them?
Well, unfortunately, we have come to the end of tax. So we won't be able to project.
Good point.
A time in which they would merge. I can't tell you that it would be two years, three years, or four years from now. But if we were to stay within the system, I have a great deal of confidence that we would be there within the next three years.
Mr. Shore?
Dr. Hastings, can you hit the rewind button by two slides?
Maybe. This one?
That one. Who or what is this educational resource, educational resource group? Who, what is this entity?
This is a group that we have purchased their evaluation system about a year and a half ago, maybe just about a year ago. And they're a private entity that tracks all the districts and all the campuses in the state from the official state records.
So the information that they are analyzing is reported to the state by each district?
Yes, through the PM submissions and through the actual tax data.
Okay.
So they get their information directly from the official AIS reports that the state produces.
And what is your understanding of what they do with that data?
Well, they look at the information and as I indicated before, they do a regression analysis based off of the percent of economically disadvantaged and you.
Regression analysis, that's a lot of syllables for just a simple boy over here. What does regression analysis mean?
Well, you're not a simple boy and nobody's going to buy that, but we're going to, we're going to tell you, Mr. Shore, that the regression analysis is a statistical tool that helps level the field. You look at where the mean lies within all the groups that you're studying and then you look at the expected value of where they would be. And when you line that up, you can, you can have a literal regression.
Is the regression analysis similar to a golf handicap?
Yes. That's one of your favorite examples? Yes, it is.
Yeah, I used to have a much lower handicap before I became a board member.
That's because you had more playtime.
Okay, so what do they do with this handicap? What happens next?
They look at groups of districts. In this case, they look at them by size. So you've got five groups in the state of Texas. You've got the top 200 in terms of size and then each subgroup of 200, except for the fifth group, has like 215.
And each one of these green dots, except for the red star, represents a school district?
In that top 200.
And so we are grouped with the other largest 199 school districts in the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And now the star, you said that we're really on the boundary of 1-1 and 1-2.
Yes, but we actually fall in 1-1.
Okay, all right. And what does that mean? When we fall 1-1, what does that mean?
That is, that is the best category. And it's a little difficult for us sometimes to get our mind around because a lot of charts that we look at have the upper right-hand quadrant as being the best. But this isn't about just looking at quantitative growth. We're looking at rankings. And so the best rank is number one.
This is like golf, you want to be low.
Exactly. So your best rank is number one and if your range is from number one to 200 across number one to 200 above, then if you are in that bottom quartile, that 1-1, you have among the highest rankings in the state.
Okay, and that bottom quartile, which is like the lime green color.
Yep.
That represents 50 school districts?
No. It represents five.
Five school districts?
Isn't that what I got there?
Well, I don't know what you got there.
One, two, three, four?
One-fourth of the chart.
The whole green, not just 1-1.
1-1?
No.
Oh, you bought the whole green van?
Whole green.
I've never counted up how many we got in that whole group.
Well, if we divide 200 by four, it's 50. Okay, so if there's 200 school districts, the top 10 percent would be 1 through 20.
Yes.
And that's the top 10 performing school districts in the state?
Yes.
The largest school.
Largest school districts in the state.
What number were we?
17.
On the API, the academic performance, we were 17.
That's pretty good, isn't it?
That's very good.
And Mr. Shore, if I might add, and just as a disclaimer, this chart is a matrix that combines both axes from the High Academic Performance Index versus the Financial Performance Index. The Financial Performance Index is using last year's financial, so we don't know that yet. The Academic Performance is the 2011 academic data. So the quadrant of the star could change because of the financial ones when we get it in. The academic rating will not change. It's at 17 out of the 200, so.
Has he signed that new-to-year contract?
Yes, he did.
So, Dr. Burns, you're absolutely correct. What we're actually looking at, even though we've highlighted the Academic Performance Index, this is actually the Educational Performance Index in which we rank even higher than 17.
Where do we rank?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Yeah, overall, when you, and when you put the two axes together.
That's like top 5 percent.
Yes, sir.
Or even 3.
That's pretty good.
That's pretty good.
Thank you.
And I just.
You're welcome.
Like to reiterate that the district met the, where we were exemplary or recognized on the absolute standard, which is not always clear when you read about it without any special provisions. And that is, the staff is to be committed for that.
Yeah, that's impressive. That's impressive. Your staff ought to pat themselves on the back.
Absolutely. And as I said earlier, although they're not all here, some of our principals are here. So we always want to take opportunity to appreciate them. But their staffs, they work incredibly hard, a lot of hours. You heard the testimonials tonight, they're all VIPs out there. They're all working incredibly hard to make that academic performance happen. So we are, we're very proud of all of them, so. And our students, let's don't forget them. They actually want to have to play. We do all the coaching in the world, but they got to show up and play. So we pat our students on the back because they're the ones that perform, so.
Board members, any more questions? At this time, we'll move to item 3A, Dr. Burns, Board Operations. Are you ready?
We're ready.
We'll continue with item 3A, which is Audience for Guests. Are there any audience for guests, Ms. Scrivener?
No, ma'am, there are not.
There are not? Okay, then we'll move to item 3B, Consent Agenda. Item 3B1, Election of Personnel. 3B2, Consider Approval of Temporary Disability Leave. 3B3, Review TASB Update 91 Legal Policies and Add/Revise or Delete Local Policies as Recommended by TASB Policy Service and District Administrative Staff, Second Reading. 3B4, Consider Approval of Changes to the Following Board Policy, BDD Local, Second Reading. 3B5, Consider Outstate Travel Request for R.L. Turner Metzger Academy to Travel to Norman and Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. March 8 through 9, 2012 for College Tour, Oklahoma City Memorial and. March 8 through 9, 2012, for College Tour, Oklahoma City Memorial and Chesapeake Tour. 3B6, Consider Out-of-State Travel Requests for Mock Trial Law Academy from Creekview High School to Travel to Little Rock, Arkansas. January 13 through 14, 2012, to Attend the Clinton/Little Rock ISD Mock Trial Invitational. 3B7, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Newman Smith High School Debate to Travel to Fort Lauderdale, Florida. January 6 through 9, 2012, to Participate in the University School Fort Lauderdale, Florida Sun Invitational National Debate Tournament.
They've already gone.
3B8, Consider Out-of-State Travel Request for Newman Smith Science and Engineering Pathway Students to Travel to Hutchinson, Wichita, Kansas. March 21st to 24th, 2012, to Tour Cosmos Sphere and the NASA Space Shuttle Orbital Missions Simulation Program in Wichita State University. 3B9, Consider Financial Reports for September and October 2011 and Tax Office Report for November 2011. 3B10, Consider Approval and Execution of Bank Deposit Account Document, Including Banking Resolution and Certificate of Incumbency. 3B11, Consider Approval of Resolution Authorizing Tax Pool Representatives. 3B12, Consider Approval of Resolution Designating Investment Officers for the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. 3B13, Consider Donation of Gifts to Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. 3B14, Consider Approval of Waterline Easement at Dan F. Long Mill School. 3B15, Consider Approval of Final Plaid for Dave Blair Elementary School Property. 3B16, Consider RFP Number 11-11-021-1 for Elementary and Pre-K Classroom Materials. 3B17, Consider RFP Number 11-12-011-1 for CCTV Security Camera Installations. 3B18, Consider Acceptance of Purchasing Report for the Period December 1, 2011 to January 12, 2012. 3B19, Consider Cooperative Purchasing Fees Report for 2010-11 Fiscal Year. 3B20, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-12-071-4 Private Fiber Restoration and Location Services. 3B21, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 09-01-141-4 for Library Furniture. 3B22, Consider Exercising the Extension Option of RFP Number 10-11-162-2 for Art Supplies. 3B23, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Work-Study Meeting Held November 17, 2011. 3B24, Consider Approval of Board of Trustees Work-Study Meeting Held December 1, 2011. 3B25, Consider Approval of Minutes of Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Held December 1, 2011. Board, is there any action to be taken on the?
Actually, I'd like to pull item number 1, 4, please.
1 and 4?
Yes. What exactly are we changing on? Says Consider Approval of Changes to the Following Board Policy, BDD.
That is the committee that Mr. Shore?
If that's 9D.
Yes.
That's Update 90 BDD, which the Board Subcommittee by Mr. Shore added the announcement of the education hours.
What we did as a committee and submitted was that, beginning with the first board meeting after January 1, 2013, that before the first vote of each meeting, the Board President is to announce the number of hours that each board member has achieved or attained regarding the continuing education.
Got you.
That, that's the only addition that is being made to Board Update 90.
Got you.
Mr. Goode? Oh, did you want to discuss 4 anymore?
No, we're fine, we're fine. I just wanted.
Mr. Goode?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I'd like to, I'd like to second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Goode, second by Mr. Fleming. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. The next item is 3C, Consider Approval of District's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER for the Period Ending August 3, 2011.
Ms. Klein, we're going to, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hyatt to introduce, but I think the committee's already finished, but try it.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. This is statutory requirement that annually the district's required to have a financial audit done of its books. Our Director of Financial Reporting, Ms. Scott Roderick, will present the item and introduce it as far as the work that's previously been done by our audit committee. Mr. Roderick?
In accordance with Section 44.008 of the Texas Education Code, the Board of Trustees of each public school district shall have its accounts audited annually at the district's expense by a certified public accountant holding a permit from the Texas State Board of Public Accountancy. The audit must be completed following the close of each fiscal year. The independent audit must meet at least the minimum requirement in being a format prescribed by the Texas State Board of Education, subject to review and comment by the state auditor. The audit shall include a review of the accuracy of the fiscal information provided by the district through the Public Education Information Management System or PIMS. A copy of the annual audit report approved by the Board of Trustees shall be filed with the district with the agency not later than the 150th day after the end of the fiscal year for which the audit was made. The firm of Hankins Eastip Deaton Tonn and Seay has audited, audited the district's financial records and submitted an unqualified opinion on those records. The CFB/ISD Audit Committee of the Board of Trustees met today, January 12, 2012, at 5:00 PM to discuss the details of the financial report with the district employees and Mr. Dan Tonn, lead external auditor. As in prior years, the district will submit this report for evaluation by the Association of School Business Officials, School Business Officials and the Government Financial Officers Association. There is a certification that the board will vote on, on as the approval or disapproval of the audit report. I'll read that certification now. "We, the undersigned, certify that the attached annual financial report of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District were reviewed and either approved or disapproved before the year ended August 31, 2011, at a meeting of the Board of Trustees of such school district on the 12th day of January 2012." The Audit Committee will now make a recommendation to the full board regarding the comprehensive annual financial report. The administration recommends that we approve the, this report.
Well, before we share with the board what the Audit Committee is recommending, Mr. Fleming and myself had an opportunity to meet with two of the principals of Hankins, Eastip, Deaton, Tonn and Seay, and it's clear that the district is getting its money's worth from those people because they had to exercise great diligence to come up with some criticisms that were legitimate of our financial situation. And the, the very small items they pointed out, okay, were certainly warranted to bring to our attention. And it's clear, because they said it, that not only is the district earning its money from those folks, but it's earning its money from the staff for the district. Because not only did they give us, as a district, the best opinion that they could, but they were also highly complimentary of the staff that they worked with, and I know that Mr. Fleming and myself greatly appreciated hearing those words. The, the Audit Committee had an opportunity to ask them any questions that we wanted to. They answered them clearly and succinctly. And after that, the Audit Committee voted, and, and the vote was to approve, to recommend to this board that this board approve the CAFER. So, Madam President, there you have the Audit Committee's report and recommendation.
I'd like to thank the Audit Committee for serving. Since it is a committee recommendation of approval, we don't need a second. So, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And we're actually voting to approve the CAFER.
Yes.
That is correct.
And I think, Mr. Hyatt, there were a lot of compliments in that motion for you and your staff.
I appreciate the compliments and hate to overdo it, but because of the direction and the consistent leadership of the superintendent in this board, it actually makes this job a little bit easier. I thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Scott.
At this time, we are at item number 4, Comments from Board Members. Board members, are there any other comments you wish to make at this time?
Yeah. We can't get out of here before 8:30, so I have to say something.
My, my time says it's 8:30.
Has to be on the agenda, though. Has to be on the agenda.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. Well, well, it kind of is because it deals with Update 90 and that, that, that thing we're adding about continuing education, okay? And as some of you know, I'm participating in leadership TASB, and so as part of that, go to conferences throughout the state. And I heard one of the, one of the speakers say that he was so impressed to hear a student tell a teacher that the best part of that student's day was showing up at school. And hearing those words made me think that I owe it to everybody here and everybody out there, that I know that, that everybody I work with in the system harbors that same attitude, that we wake up each day thinking, how can we reaffirm that every child will say, the best part of my day is going to school? And I appreciate working with all of you. If that's off the agenda, so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. At this time, we're at item, Agenda Item 5, Closed Meeting. Dr. Burns, do we have anything to discuss in closed meeting tonight?
No, ma'am, we do not.
That lets us kind of skip item 6, which is to reconvene after our closed meeting. So, that brings us to item number 7. And we appear to be at the close of our business unless somebody tells me.
I got 8:32.
And according to Dr. Burns, we're at 8:32, so Mr. Shore was successful. Thank y'all very much. Happy New Year.
Anthony, you're starting to feel a little more comfortable because you like to hear yourself talk.
I'm winging it.
You better enjoy this. We're not bothering you. It's 8:30.
Hey, I'm enjoying it, all right?
And lying to me all this time, and you.